Teleconference meetings pursuant to Minnesota State Statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person to person contact due to COVID nineteen pandemic. By action of the school board of the Pelican Rapids School District, all future meetings of the Pelican Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D David. Point zero two one, meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means. In accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from our remote locations via Zoom. The link to this meeting will be posted on our district's website. Public comments for school board meetings during opportunity for visitors to speak may be submitted as follows. I've got an email address for Barb Ripley and that is B R I P L E Y. B Ripley at Pelican Rapids K twelve dot M N dot U S.
And just to add into that, Mr. Carter John, with Governor Walz's easing the restrictions, actually today. It allows for ten people to be in a, in a meeting room. So that's why you see more than one school board member. On online here or in at present at the media center at the Pelican Rapids High School. So that's why a little bit of change just happened today.
Yep, you're correct. Thanks. That being said, we have a roll call here. Ann?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Brittany?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
I'm here. Mike?
Here.
We're all present. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Tony N. So. Hey, first item up was to approve the meeting agenda. Jerry, do we have anything that we need to add or take off the agenda? You could. Anyone else? Entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
My motion.
Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any further discussion about the agenda? Hearing no discussion, all those favor approving the meeting agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Any emails, Barb? Okay. Well, we'll move on. First item up will be administrative reports. Elementary principal, athletic director, Mr. Nelson. Do you want to? Stay on that works too.
All right. Good evening. Bring enrollments for May.
Yeah, move on.
Okay. There we go. Four twenty-six and K through six. We'd like to thank Kim Hugrud, Robin Dial and Pam Bakken for their years of service at Viking Elementary. They will be retiring in the end of the school year and they will be missed and thank them for their service that they have provided for our students. We'd also like to welcome Madison Oswald as a new second grade teacher. Madison is a graduate of Fraser High School and Minnesota State University Morehead. We will be collecting iPads, library books, other student material on Wednesday. We'll be using one collection spot in the west parking lot. So parents will bring both high school elementary supplies to one spot. We will pick it up, we will put it in the van storage garage for a week or so. And before it's moved back into the buildings. We'll also be handing out student report cards and other items that students may have that'll go home with them when they drop off their iPads. So. They won't get that till we get the iPad back. Reason for the collection is tech team needs to go through them. Fix any devices that are broke, clean them up, get them ready for next school year, whatever, different things the teachers want to put on. They're different than this year. Thursday from five thirty to thirty, there'll be what we call a reverse parade at Chauncey Martin parking lot. Where the teachers will all be sat around and the parents and students will drive through. And just kind of a way to say thank you for a good year and kind of send the students off that way. So. That'll be from five thirty to six thirty before the parade that the city is putting on. High school report. We got some guidelines today from High School League and the National Federation on what. We can be doing with youth sports and that could possibly change, but so we're going to be working with coaches. Advisors, weight room people to set up a plan for summer activities. Everything would be nine students or less. Very limited what you could do if someone has like the basketball. No one else can have that basketball till they're done and then we'll wipe it down, put it away. So like softball, you can't have two students play catch, anything like that. So they're very specific on what they can do, can't do. Weight room equipment, drinking phones, things like that. So we'll be working on that with a plan. Once we have a plan in place, we will notify you guys what our plan is. If you have any questions on that, please let me know. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barb?
Hey, I stand. That's me?
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson's there. Right there.
Good. Okay. Enrollment. We are at four hundred and twenty-two students and in month of May. Not on the list though, I want to thank Ms. Dial, Robin Dial, for her years of service here at Pelican Rapids High School. And if you looked at the consent items. We have offered the position with your approval tonight to Adam Satterly. Who has taught art for three years at Turner School and high school for grades K through eight and he's very excited to be here. Wants to be here, so. It was a big process and I think he'll do a great job. Distance learning update. This week we are finishing up with everything, our classes, grades, things like that. Distance learning was an experience and we learned a lot and I'm having teacher checkouts this week. And I had a few this morning already, this afternoon. And the things that they learned that they're hoping to continue to do. So there is some good out of this distance learning if you want to find some good out of it. MCA AP testing, we had no MCA test. However, we did have the MCA KELT test. Kids took that at home. And we'll wait for results and how that went. There were some hiccups with that, some uploading problems with that. So. There are some students open that completed the AP test that will have to retake that if they're like. Summer school, summer school will start June first. We are going to have a summer school meeting right now. M D E, M D E guidelines came out. Late last week and they said that you could have up to nine in the classroom. They recommend six in a classroom. So we will have an option to look at that option. Look at coming to the classroom, looking at distance learning with summer school or both, hybrid. So they can do, come here one day a week, get home the other. So search student first four days a week. Graduation. I think we emailed all the information off this afternoon. I don't know if you have time to look that over. We are sending a pack at home with students to the seniors. I mean, just a couple of things that we put, anything related to COVID. If they had, if they have or someone in their immediate household tests are positive, they cannot attend graduation. Been in contact, anything like that. They should be in fourteen day party. So we made a checklist for them. And we'll go from there with that. Right now with graduation, we're at the west parking lot, right outside school here. I guess what I'm trying to do my best is to limit the number of. Adults outside. So I guess what I'd like to talk to school board members about is who would like to be there? And how do we want, what do we want that to look like? I'm right now talking to a school nurse. It's giving me, right now how we're looking at for diplomas. Medicine today could change, but we're looking at where we place on the table, walk away, they come up, take it up. The table, they don't shake hands. I need someone to wipe off the table and then next person will put diploma on the table.
I can be present if you want help.
I'll be there.
Doesn't matter to me.
Can I follow you on it? I mean, soaring vehicles. If you say we all want to be there and spread out. You tell me.
I don't need to be there, so. I mean, if you need help with something, I can be there, but otherwise. I've been to quite a few.
I don't, I'll be there. I don't need to be seen. Hang on with that. Whatever.
So we'll have a couple of staff members that are going to. Help with parking, figuring that out. We'll have a speaker system and it'll be on the YouTube, the school website. It'll be livestreamed. So. Any other questions with graduation? If you have any questions, feel free to email me. Again, things can change with information. I think we did put that in there. But we might have to make some adjustments if needed. Okay, prom.
Lot of work for you guys.
Yeah, yes, it's been a lot of meetings. Yeah, it's a little easier just to do it in the graduating. Prom. Right now prom is postponed. I've been working with Tricia Schlemann, our prom advisor and Melissa Hatley, who. One of the leaders of the post-prom committee. So we've been working together. I think what we're doing is postponing until July seventeen. If for some reason we can't have it, can't work things out, we'll just cancel it. We're just trying our best. We know that kids, or really girls. Bought dresses, can't return them. So we're trying to make this work. If we can't make it work, then we'll cancel after. Won't go any further than July seventeen. Okay. Okay, talked about upcoming events, graduation and then summer school. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Stay tuned. Thank you.
Stand up. We have Mr. Steve's. So TFM, is that in business item? And we gotta prove that, okay. Yeah, why don't we?
That's fine.
Why don't we do that?
Were you guys able to hear that? Trevor's going to present before he does the LTFM update.
Give it all at the same time.
Sorry, I should let you do that.
Oh, that's fine. You're closer to the mic. Thanks. Okay. Mr. Martinez, you're up next, finance director.
Can't hear you.
There we go.
Yeah.
Perfect. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen so everyone can see.
I like it.
Everyone can see themselves. Alright, so we'll dive right into the treasures report for the month of April. Very, very quiet money month in terms of payables and receivables. Main focus was regarding making sure that we stayed up to date with all the legislative session in terms of what they were going to do with, with upcoming funding formula. And we have some updates on that that we'll share later on. So let's go ahead and dive right in. Mislap, our investment, this is where Minnesota pays all of our aid.
Rudy. I can't see your screen.
Oh, you guys can't?
Seeing the wrong screen.
Okay. How about now?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
There we go. I, I have three screens going at once. That's probably why. Alright, so we'll dive right in. Investments, Mislap, this is where Minnesota deposits all of our state aid. We receive, we receive the state aid as normal for the month of April. On the fifteenth and then the thirtieth, we received close to just a little over a million dollars. I withdrew one point, one point one million dollars to make sure that we met all of our obligations. You see that journal entry right here in our general fund. At the end of the, at the end of the, at the end of the month, we had three point three million dollars available. And I keep telling everyone that two million out of that three point three, it's entitled to the aid anticipation that we borrowed last year, which we will have to pay in September. Once we get a little bit more guidance from the state regarding what they're going to do, if hopefully they pay us at a hundred percent, if not. You know, we might be looking at an eighty twenty, meaning that they'll pay twenty, eighty percent now and they'll hold twenty percent in receivables and they'll pay us throughout the following fiscal year. So we might look into a potential extending our aid anticipation again, but again, that's not concrete. I just want to plant the idea that that conversation might come again. We'll get more developments as the month of May goes and hopefully into early June. So stay tuned on that. We're making sure that, that hopefully we don't have to borrow again. But in September, regardless, we have to pay back the two million dollars. OPEB trust, this is where we pay a lot of our retirees that still, that are still in their early retirement benefit piece. We made ten dollars and we paid twenty dollars in fees. So we ended up actually losing a little bit of dollars. Not significant. It's been pretty stable now. Seems like we have a very good risk factor in our, in our investment. So, so that's good for us. That way we don't lose any more dollars that we could potentially pay out to, to those retirees. In terms of our, our general fund, again, we, we took one point one million dollars to cover all of our expenses. We had accounts payable in our general fund of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. This was a little bit lower than our normal months. And again, the reason for is we're not running operations as we normally would. So. We're starting to see some of those benefits. I did just a quick, a quick three month average. This particular year and we normally in our accounts payable, we're always in anywhere between five twenty-five and, and five fifty thousand. So you can see that, you know, it's, those savings are starting to show in our, in our ledger. Payroll accounted for about three hundred and thirteen thousand. Not a lot of activity in all of our other funds, other than our food service fund. And again, the reason for that is because we just don't have that much activity going on right now. With the stay at home order that was very, very, very enforced in the month of April. At the end, in terms of cash flow, we started the, the month of April with, with a negative balance of twenty-eight thousand dollars. After we took from our investment account, total accounts payable, total payroll, we ended up with a positive two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in, in cash that we can hold today. It's in our bank account. Our petty cash account. In the last month, nothing has run through it. Again, normally we pay our, normally we pay a lot of our officials out of here. There's no spring activities going on, so nothing, nothing happening there. We made nine cents in interest and we paid five dollars in the service fee that we pay the bank. So. Went down a couple, couple of dollars. Collateral, we have substantial collateral that's provided by the bank that holds our account. So we're good and safe. At no point in time, we have more than two million dollars sitting in our account, which is really good. Other thing to point out. Is as of today, we still have not received our levy payment. Hopefully it'll be coming this week and normally. Normally the, the county normally distributes it on the fifteenth. I have not seen it and I sent Wayne Stein a quick email to see if there was any delays from Otterdale County. Or what was going on. He has not responded, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. Hopefully, hopefully they distribute those means within this week. Payables. Pretty, pretty, pretty normal month in terms of our payables. Not a lot that stood out to me. Other than. Other than just. Less, I processed less payables to be paid, which is good for our bottom line at the end of the month and at the end of the year. Not a lot of journal entries this particular period, just because normally this is where, this is month is when we reconcile the levy and since the levy hasn't been paid out, not a lot of activity. Update on our COVID situation. Again, we started tracking COVID since, since it started and it was implemented. For the month of March, this is what I delivered, that we had a total of about two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars that we, that we've used during this particular stay at home order in the closure of the school. In the month of April, we had salary at about one hundred and seventy-three. We spent nineteen thousand dollars in food supplies. In terms of supplies, this is what we use to continue to clean the school, disinfect and, and things like that. So about four thousand dollars. Over the two months, we've spent three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to help maintain the normal operations of the school. And again, we're tracking this for the event that there's any federal, any federal reimbursements coming up in the near future. Other thing that we started tracking was the meals. This is a piece that we didn't have all the information last month, so I apologize for not giving it, giving the information to you guys. For the month of March, we delivered close to four thousand meals. That includes both breakfast and lunch. And that is because the stay at home order, I believe, was placed somewhere in about the eighteenth, or I can't remember exactly what date. So a little day, a few fewer days to operate. In April, it was a full month, but it was all during distance learning and on the month of April, we had over ten thousand, close to eleven thousand meals. And again, includes breakfast and lunch. So over the two months, we've delivered over fifteen thousand lunches. So. Kudos to everyone that's been involved in that process from, from our, our paras helping out, getting reassigned duties to our, our bus service, helping us. Get, get to those spots and deliver those meals. So. That is all I have for the treasures report. Just another thing to point out that in the agenda, you'll see in the consent items that we have the approval of the Lakes Country Health and Safety Agreement. This is very standard. We do this every year. They help us coordinate, making sure that we implement all those good, good safety practices at our school. And we'll just continue to renew. They do a great, great job for us and we have a great working relationship with them and Trev has made good, good, good friendships with them. That's all I got for the treasures report.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Superintendent, Mr. Ness.
Hey there. See, one, one thing on the agenda, just to notice that you see the administrative reports have moved up front and, and the, as I was reflecting on the last board meeting. You approved, in the consent agenda items, you approved things and then afterwards you got to report on them. So I just thought it, I'm asking our principals and Rudy and myself to. Give comments on any consent agenda items that might have some questions. So then you as a board member, you're, you're making a decision. An informed decision prior rather than getting the information afterwards. So that was just a, a, a simple switch around. And I'll just add in one more, one more on the EAP, the Employee Assistance Program. You had a board member that commented on that and if you look at that, the contract, there is only one session for, per employee and one for each of their family member. I would recommend approving the contract tonight, but I would also like to provide, what would it cost the district to provide two or three visits? And, and the reason for that, with a counseling service, typically your first session, a lot of it is getting to know the person. And then also sharing different things. And then you, then you need to come back typically for, for some more help. So, so I wanted to. At the next board meeting, hopefully we'd have some information for you, for you to consider possibly increasing that to two or three visits per, for employee. The other, the other big news, it's the legislative session, they've ended to date. It sounds like there's coming back in June already and, and it's just so unknown with all the COVID. There's so many things going on. But here's some of the things that they did do. First of all, they loosened restrictions on the funding use. Well, for one thing, the two percent increase next year is intact, which is great. But they loosening restrictions on compensatory and flexible fundings for transfers. So. So if you have a large fund balance in one of your categorical funding and you need some dollars into your general fund. Because of cash flow issues, it allows the district to make those moves much more freely. Some other cleanup things that they did, you know, as an example, for a probationary teacher, they need one hundred and twenty days during the school year to earn a year towards tenure. And, and so they've done some relaxing and reducing days there too. So for staff members that might have been hired a little bit later in the year. They, they might get this year counted towards their tenure. Same thing with truancy, pretty much after the schools were shut down. They're loosening truancy reporting and different things. So. And aid not lost there. And then also achievement and integration, which is very important to Pelican Rapids. Normally you spend all your dollars during that fiscal year, allowing some carryover, which again, it just sounds like they're being much more flexible. I hope they keep some of these rules in place and give the, give the districts more flexibility to manage their money as, as they see fit. One of the glaring weaknesses of the bill so far, I think there, there was not a bonding bill. I'm not sure if they're going to come back with that. But that's typically, you know, a, a pretty much an incentive to get the economy rolling. People, you know, jobs, you know, buildings, roads, all of those good things. It doesn't necessarily affect. Pelican Rapids or any school district per se, but, but if your community is working, it's going to help you. You're, if they have a job in your community, working on the road constructions or building. They're going to stay in your, in your community and their kids are going to stay. So, so it really does help. I think we have the hiring process on the agenda later. So if, are there any questions for me at this time?
I don't believe so. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent items here. Approved board meeting minutes, April twentieth, twenty twenty meeting. B, financial claims and April bills. C, treasures report. D, accept donations. To Pelican Rapids High School Lunch Program for Negative Balances Anonymous, eight hundred dollars. To Club Bikes, New York Life slash Ben Wiesner, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. Approve the agreement with Detroit Lakes Literacy Consortium, Consortium for Adult Basic Education for July first, two thousand and twenty to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Approve the lease agreement with West Central Minnesota Community Action Incorporated for Head Start for two thousand and twenty, twenty-one. Prove the Employee Assistance Program Agreement with Lakeland Mental Health Center Incorporated through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Improve the Lakes Country Service Co-op Health and Safety Agreement. Item I, personnel, approve the letter of resignation, retirement, excuse me, approve the letter of retirement from Todd Hughesby as a summer custodian effective May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. Hire summer workers, Sherry O'Brien, Greta Tolleson, Tim Rustan, Kyle Hugrud, Mitch Verdorn, Craig Jones. Hire Adam Satterly as point eight seven high school art teacher. Hire Madison Oswald as an elementary. Hire Madison Oswald as an elementary teacher. Approve the Principal's Agreement for July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2021. Approve the non-certified salary schedule and benefits for July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2021. That was for non-certified salary schedule. Rudy, do you have some details for the, the last two? Or should I make it have a motion first and then we discuss it?
I'm sorry, Jenna, which, which items were those?
The, the agreements, the Principal's Agreement and this non-certified.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we can briefly discuss in terms of, in terms of what, what we settled and let me just pull up those documents quickly here. All right, so with, we met with the Principals Association and we entered into bargaining with the Principals Association just to make sure that, one, we, we met that piece that is required. It was very quick. You know, it was, we have a good relationship with, with the association. And overall, it was, it was a very quick, very quick meeting. The Principals Association requested to match this salary increase that the Teachers Union received in this particular biennium for the 1920 and 2021 school year. As a district and the negotiating team, we, we confer, we, we thought that that was fair. The second request they had was to also increase their insurance contributions. We met as a negotiating team and then we, we came up with, with a number that, that we think is equitable, which will send you guys the details here shortly. The last thing was one of the main topics of, of the conversation was the Principals Association requested their life insurance policy to be up from 100,000 to 200,000. We felt that that was more than appropriate, given the situation that, that we experienced here in the last two months. Not a potential or not a, a big ticket item. It was, it was very feasible, very, very affordable. So those were the only three requests we were able to, we were able to offer them. And very quickly, they, they accepted it. In terms of the support staff negotiations, they are a bargaining unit that, that includes everyone from our food staff to our custodians, to, to our paras. And they sent us a request of, of six different items that as a, as a, sorry, I'm just opening up that document here. That as a, is a bargaining unit, they, they wanted, they wanted it. We were able to, to cut through a lot of it in terms of, why was it that they were requesting, requesting that particular piece? And a lot of the times, the background story is what helped us as a negotiating team really determine, why is it that, that they're asking for this particular benefit? We were able to meet in the, in the middle and I'll, I'll share some of the requests that, that they did. They wanted seven, seven days to accumulate in their agreement. They wanted to up the unused payout rate that we do at the end of the year, if they have any, any unused personal days. They wanted us to increase their insurance benefit also. We have to follow the Affordable Care Act that any employee that is over 30 years, we, we have to make health insurance affordable for them. They requested a pay increase and they also requested a, increasing the amount of sick days earned. Currently, we, they earn one per month and we have three different, three different kinds of employees, nine month, 10 month and a 12 month. So if you're a nine month employee, you would earn nine days throughout your contract, if you're a 10, so on and so forth. And also they wanted to increase the pay rate in non-certified substitutes. And it was, it was really fascinating to hear, you know, a lot of the, the back, background story. But ultimately, we came back as a district and, and what, what we discussed and what they agreed to was that in terms of the accumulation for personal days, we want to keep it at five, we don't want to increase to seven. The recent four is our administrative team has a substantial, substantial hard time trying to find substitute for our paras. And they're very essential to the classroom. So we decided to keep it at five. Also, the other logic is with the four day week, we believe that that Monday really is, is very flexible for a lot of our employees to, to take care of themselves. Well, the one thing that we agree on was to up the unused personal day rate. So when, if they don't use it, if they want to cash it and at the end of the, of the year, they can. And we upped that from 12:25 an hour to 13 an hour, we thought it was very fair. The second thing is, the third thing they requested was the insurance benefit piece. We decided not to, we decided not to give any insurance contribution increase, given that health insurance is, is getting to be very expensive. So at, at this moment, we said that the district couldn't afford it and they agreed to it. The second thing is we, they, in terms of the pay rate increase, we, we, we told them that both Principals Association and our Teachers Union took a 1.5 and a 1.59 pay rate increase. And they also agreed to that. So again, what you, what you have in front of you is their schedule, which has already been calculated to reflect that 1.5 and 1.59 increase on the, on the two years. And they agreed to that, they, they thought that that was very reasonable. And in terms of earning the, the rate of earning sick days as, as a district and negotiating team, we decided that we didn't, we, we didn't feel it was necessary because they have, they receive substantial sick days in addition to personal days. Plus with a four day week and plus with a hard time that we have finding substitutes for, for paras, we didn't think it would be fair to the district and they agreed to that, they, they understood. And then lastly, was the hourly pay rate when we have non-certified substitute. And we, we upped that from 12:25 to $13 an hour. And again, that's to match the second request they had. So all in all, it was, it was very good negotiations from both bargaining units and they were very quick. And we were happy that both parties wanted to come to a quick agreement. And really, all, all it took was one meeting and, and thank you for all that participated on both sides. That's all I got. If you guys have any questions for me or for the negotiating team?
Here are any questions. Entertained a motion to approve the consent items. A motion by Brenda to approve the consent items as read. Do we have a second? Second by Brittany. Now any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent items as listed in red signify by saying aye. All right, those opposed, same, motion carries. On the business items, approve the letter of retirement from Pam, excuse me, of Pam Bachan as special ed para effective May 21st, 2020. And I have something here to read. After heartfelt consideration, I will be retiring as a special ed paraprofessional at the end of this current school year. My many years at Viking Elementary will always remain special in my heart. I have been blessed to work with incredible staff and students, but I am overjoyed and looking forward to playing the grandma role. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the support and guidance through the years. Pelican Rapids is and will continue to always be an awesome school district. Respectfully yours, Pam Bachan. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of retirement for Pam Bachan.
A motion by Mike to approve the retirement letter.
A second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion on approving Pam Bachan's retirement? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same, motion carries, enjoy your retirement. Approve the graduation list for 2020. Come on in. Graduation list, yes, they're all eligible to graduate Friday night, 7:00 PM. Should be 66 on the list. Motion by Greg to approve the graduation, graduate, graduate, yeah, the list for 2020. Do we have a second? And a second by Brittany. Any discussion approving the graduation list?
Good job.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same, motion carries. Approve the 2020, 21 Resolution for Membership of the Minnesota State High School League.
If I remember correctly, it's just a malshare, a formality that we do every year to stay involved in life.
Mr. Ness, is this typically a formality for the, approve the High School League membership?
Yes, it is. And I know last year, they required board members to watch the, the clip of what, why we play the game or why we play. And, and the, they are redoing their website, so we don't have a link for that. But I believe it's exact same as last year. So what I would do is I would approve the resolution and, and then if a, a new video or a new late, just board members, you're, you're on the hook for watching the video. So we would include that into that motion. So I would move forward with the resolution.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the 2021 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League and then require us board members to be on the hook to watch the video once the website issues get reconciled.
Okay, now motion by Greg. Second by Brenda. And the motion is for what's listed in the agenda, plus required board members to watch the video when it becomes available. Any further discussion approving the membership for the State High School League? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution, then we have to do it. Have to do one by one?
Typically, that's a roll call vote.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. Looking at the document and I didn't look at it close enough.
Catch resolution.
All right, we got a motion in a second and this is a resolution, so we'll do it by roll call. Ann, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Standby. Mr. Ness, should we read this also? The resolution?
You know, I don't have it sitting right in front of me. Typically, you, you might do the introductory paragraph, depending on how long it is. You know, you could eliminate some, but just for the audience to get the gist of what, what the Minnesota State High School League is, involving all activities and we're agreeing to abide by their rules and participate. But if you, if you have a paragraph introductory, that would be appropriate.
Okay. So we got a motion in a second, but this is a resolution. So resolve that the governing board of school district number 548, County of Otter Tail, State of Minnesota, delegates control, supervision and regulation of interscholastic and athletic and fine arts events referred to in Minnesota State Statute, Section 128C.01, to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Okay, so this is a roll call. Ann, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes, Mike?
Yes.
Resolution carries. I am the approve activity fees for 2020, 2021. Is there anything on that?
That we were staying the same. Anything else on activity fees that you can?
Mr. Nelson was recommending you stay, stay the same. You know, we're really unsure of activities for the fall at this point. So I think this is an item, the way the, the budget is improved, it would be, I think, wise to remain as stable in this category.
I will make a motion to approve the activity fees for 2020 and 2021.
You have a motion by Mike, do we have a second? Second by Brittany. Any discussion on activity fees? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same, motion carries. Item B, approve the Blackboard Service Agreement.
Yeah, so this is going to be a new service agreement. We discussed it in our finance committee meeting. Essentially, what it is doing is it'll give our website a little bit of a facelift. It'll, it'll make it more, more appealing. This is a project that we have been working on for the last couple of years, trying to, trying to make sure that, that we're up to date on our technology. The other, the other reason that this came about is Blackboard forgot to bill us for the last three years. So finally, in the, in the winter, they knocked on, on my door and they said, hey, you know, you haven't paid in three years. Here is your bill. And I said, well, I'm not paying that, you know, because of your negligence, I'm not entitled to pay. So essentially, we got into a little bit of a, into a little bit of a negotiation with them. And what they ended up doing is they ended up waiving the last three years of, of our license fee. And, and in return, we, we negotiated with them that we would have a board approved new contract, which will, will, will hopefully you guys agree to it, which will give us access to their library and we can update our website as needed as, as possible. We think it's a great investment for, for all the new platforms that we're rolling out. And, and again, we're, we're saving, we're saving about $10,000 just by renewing the service agreement with them. And it's a year to year thing. So a year from now, if Blackboard doesn't work for us or we don't like it, we can switch a different host. But we've been using Blackboard since, since I can remember. So that's what I have for you guys. Again, it's, it's, it's going to give our school district a better view and look. Any questions?
And it's all listed in the documents that you've attached?
Yes, I believe we did send it out. What it is, what you guys received on the, on the board packet, it is the, they gave us two options. One was to buy the template, which was about a $5,000 expense at implementation, plus about a $1,300 annual license fee. So the upfront cost was very expensive. And we were given the information that a template normally lasts about four years before it becomes very antique, which is what we have today. We've been using the same plate, same template for over five years. With the Plan B that we decided to select is it gives us access to their document or their template library. And we don't have to pay that big $5,000 fee. Instead, we'll, our, our licensing fee will be about $2,000 a year. But we can change templates at any point, at any time. And we don't have to have that upfront cost. It's a little bit more expensive per year, but we don't have that big upfront cost.
Thank you.
Yep.
Entertain a motion to approve the Blackboard Service Agreement.
Make motion.
We have a motion by Ann, do we have a second? Second by Brittany. Now any discussion on the Blackboard Service Agreement? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the Blackboard Service Agreement signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same, motion carries. Item F, approve the lunch. Item F, approve the long-term facility maintenance plan and statement of assurances for fiscal year twenty-one. Now, Mister Stevens would be on his way up.
You stand right behind Ann. Everybody can see you. By the chair.
Anybody have it up? The document?
Rudy, can you get the document? L T F M document? Thank you.
I I can get it too if Ann has it.
No worries. Coming up.
Can you make it a little bigger, Rudy?
All right, yeah, there we go. All right, so I'll just go down the line. This is our twenty-one L T F M work that we're going to do in district wide. So the first part is high school. The door locks, we're redoing that now. Just so we can get a jump start on it and it's fine. The company said that they would hold our bill for ninety days until we got it.
Are these the electronic key?
No, these are. No, um, so all the master keys, all the all those, we had a compromise in our key system and we needed to change and now we have tighter. So anyway, that we need to replace and add some changing tables that never got put in the activities area in the bathroom. So we're going to do that. Window laminate, that is the same as what we did over at the elementary school. We made the is a shatterproof coating on them, plus it can offer some UV shading and stuff like that. The hallways and recoating is recoating over the epoxy floors. Like this one down here, the one on the main hallway that runs the full length of the junior high area. Those are original when we put them in about six and seven years ago. So they've done it very well.
That will.
Yeah, yeah, considering they they used to have to get waxed over the years. You know, now we've got that. So it's been really good. In the leaders gym floor, we're doing some restructuring in there. Mister Back has to put down tape every year. So instead of putting on tape, going to have a company come in and add some lines for like pickleball and stuff like that. So then it's permanent instead of waste money on tape every year and the time and and stuff. So we're going to get that and then it gets a new coating every year anyway. So we're going to incorporate that at the same time. We talked about doing that in June, but depends on what activities are going to be allowed and what aren't. It will be scheduled the first weekend. August is the shutdown week. The elementary school door, the third and fourth grade door out back on the east side gets replaced. We've done the other ones at sixth grade and down on the fifth grade ones, put nice aluminum doors in and really in the front, that really is a big improvement. And then it's added a lot of light. We've added that top header. Transom light and then those get that coating put on it too for security. Then the floor of the kitchen needs, it's not replaced, it's another top coat because that's an epoxy. At Carfield, we are going to try to do this next week. As a matter of fact, being that we have nobody on there and we always have trouble with the field just getting so beat up and it's so hard to grow grass because it's, you know, if you have little kids in football or down there for summer rec. My plan is we're going to sod, not the whole field, but a good, you know, I'm going to say a third of it. You know, in the center that really never gets a chance to come back. So this is a good chance to do that. And it's player safety too. It just is uneven and it gets hard. Concession stand counters, we had purchased some counters last last winter from Pearl, their old high school out of their kitchen. So we're going to put those stainless steel counters in the concession stand up at the track. There's not a big ticket price on there. There's just a little bit of hardware being we already had purchased. That encaged net, we need to replace that and also with the flooring on that sidewalk that this has cut and replaced outside of door two, which comes in the old, the old main entry to come in into the gymnasium. Into the legends gym, we are going to cut in a ramp. Right now, it's a step over curve that's about seven to nine inches. And we get all of our freight there for the kitchen. So we're going to cut that in and make it so it's it's a lot more accessible. Football field bleachers, we need to add rock underneath it. We have, over the years, we've had some erosion. And we can get that locally and we just need to, it's it's a shovel job. That's what it is. So if anybody feeling like a good workout, I'll I'll take you for the day. And we need to replace a window up there. Can we go up? Okay, health and safety, that's just annual stuff that is on there. And then the energy loan. Rudy, you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, absolutely. The energy loan here is the one that we discussed in depth last year after a bunch of findings and really getting getting to understand the district a little bit more. The energy loan was a private loan that we took out to help finance a lot of the HVAC systems that we did during construction at the elementary. It is currently owned by Capital One Public Funding and we have about three to four years left on it, just a little over half a million dollars. But one of the things that we did, and this was when I was too new to truly understand, was that we had committed our L T F M revenue to help pay for this loan. And that was truly the discussion last year. Now we know it. Now we've documented and we'll we'll budget it for it here.
So, you know, before we had a really healthy L T F M, but you know, we're paying for this stuff now and when we get that paid off, we back up to do a bigger projects. And we still do our our summer maintenance stuff that I have a ongoing list that I started even in August of last year, that knowing that, okay, this is going to end the docket for for next year. And it's, you know, everything from repairing bleachers and keeping up on that stuff to to fences and just everything in the district. We go through everything and make sure painting, you know, painting some classrooms. The nice thing is we have all of our major flooring, as far as asbestos work done, is all complete. We have just a couple of small areas that that has some asbestos floor tile, but at the elementary school, I think one was at the fifth grade two years ago. So that was the last big one. So we'll, our funding goes back up. I'm going to look at doing some more, get down to kindergarten, replace that flooring and some stuff in those classrooms. But all in all, things, things, you know, obviously, we haven't had students in the building for a while. But a lot of times by this time of year, things I'm like, yeah, we need summer to get things back up. But even before the kids left, it just, you know, amazed me how nice things look. But when we have fresh things, it's easier to keep them nice and fresh and looking really nice. So pass off to our historical crews and thank you for approving the summer maintenance crews. We are starting next Tuesday, the twenty-six, six A M. So we'll be going and we're all just working smaller groups. You know, there's, we don't all work together. And so there's a group at the elementary school, floor crew over here at the high school, and then another classroom cleaning crew. And then I have Darren and Todd at work. So we're plenty small enough in our in our numbers. So so any questions? Okay, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to go ahead and we do need a resolution to to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one L T F M. L T F M ten-year plan. And we have to pass a resolution for both the revenue and the expenditures. So before you guys do that, I'm going to dive dive it into the calculations. So you see in front of you a projection for the next three to four years. And this was a new tool that that the state put out, given that we were having a lot, a lot of districts were complaining about how inaccurate some of the data was. And essentially, they helped us build this tool and now we can project and forecast more appropriately. What that means for Pelican Rapids is that for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we just discussed, we are projected to receive one hundred and ninety-five, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for L T F M. Okay, so and and because we are such a land rich a land rich district, all of the L T F M revenue comes in form of levy payments. So that is one one thing that you guys that I want to be very clear on. So we budget, we budget to the penny for a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. If you look at the at the if you look at the project list that Trev puts together, we budget just to the penny. Okay. The the other thing that that we do is we are required by the state to put a ten-year plan. And this is something that both Trev and I spend significant significant time in. Because the state wants to know that we are using those dollars correctly for the upkeep of our building. So we have to project ten years ahead of time, trying to say, you know what, one year, we're going to replace a roof, second year, a wall, three year, the floors, whatever it is. Trev has a ten-year plan that he adjusts based on what the needs of our infrastructure is. And then we go in here and then we match. So essentially, fiscal year twenty-one, if you look at the bottom, we are telling the state that we are going to spend a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in expenditures that meet all of this criteria, whether it's building, health and safety, electrical, plumbing, everything else that is approved by the state. So this is what we have for you guys in front of you. We know we're going to get a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars and we know we're going to spend a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. We've learned and now we know how to budget for it a lot better. We know the inflows and outflows of this particular plan. Then the last thing is simply Mister Ness needs to sign the statement of assurances, simply saying that we give you guys this information about the revenue and and we're going to very responsibly spend those dollars and approve expenditures. Once you guys pass the resolution of the ten-year plan for L T F M, Mister Ness signs the the statement of assurances, we send it to the state and then we just wait for this dollar, those dollars to come in. Questions?
Hey Rudy, you said this is a resolution. Do we have one to read or is it going to be just a motion?
Just a motion, John.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, I don't have any questions. Is anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the L T F M maintenance plan or a plan and statement of assurances for fiscal year twenty-one.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Mike. Second by Brenda. Any discussion on L T F M and the statement of assurances for fiscal year twenty-one? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay, we have upcoming meetings. We have a work session immediately following this meeting. However, we will be going to a closed session here shortly. So we have a work session May eighteenth, following six P M superintendent meeting, or excuse me, meeting, the superintendent hiring process. A work session June first at six P M and a regular meeting June fifteenth at six P M. So next item up is going to be a closed session and I just need something to to read here. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D David point zero five subdivision three, rent fee, which allows the school board to go into closed session pursuant to an attorney-client privilege. While in closed session, the school board will participate in confidential discussion with legal counsel regarding a potential lawsuit involving the school district. Since this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, due to the ongoing pandemic, the board will not be reconvening in open session following the closed session. Instead, this meeting will be adjourned upon completion of the closed session. But will someone make a motion for the school board to go into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D David point zero five subdivision three parentheses B? And to immediately adjourn the meeting upon completion of that closed session? We have a motion by Brenda and it's also spelled out on the agenda. So.
Second.
Motion by Brenda, second by Ann. Any discussion before we go into a closed session? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay.